Great, thank you. All right, the time is 7:30 PM. Call this meeting of the Yardley Borough Council to order. Everyone quickly, and I'll see, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up, Pat, if you could unmute yourself and do our roll call.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Segal-Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Feiner?
Present.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Curtin?
Present.
And Mr. Brea?
Here. All right, thank you. That is seven council members, and that does constitute a quorum. First item of the night is community announcements. This is an opportunity for any member of council to share an item for the public good. Does any member of council have an item they wish to share? Going once, going twice, we'll open that same offer up to the public. Does any member of the public have an item they wish to share that would qualify as a community announcement? If so, please use the raise hand feature. And going once, going twice there, we will close community announcements and move right into public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council on an item that does appear on the agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to do so during councils deliberation of that particular item. Members of the public are asked to please state their name and address for the record before their comment. Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to be acknowledged. And of course, if you can't figure that one out, a good old wave will do. Would anyone like to be acknowledged for a public comment this evening? I see a hand from Mr. Applebaum. Mute yourself and go ahead.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening, David Applebaum, 39 Breeze Drive. I wanted to talk real quickly about a project with Experience Yardley. Unfortunately, because of the circumstances around the Yardley Duck Walk, we're going to be postponing that and probably pushing that into the next year. It's unfortunate, but that's the reality. We won't be able to raise enough money quick enough to do it. So with that said, I have an exciting new project that was brought to our attention and that we want to participate in. And that is the, let me find it, it's the Artists of Yardley Plain Air Celebration, Our Towns Through Artist Eyes. Plain Air is a type of painting, generally a landscape, that is done. And what they are proposing is for the towns of Yardley and Newtown, that artists find locations to paint, and then they will submit that to the Artists of Yardley for a judged competition. I wanted to know, oh, and let me give you some dates too. So the proposed dates are May 14th through 27th. There's going to be approximately 40 artists. They are not all going to be in Yardley at one time, nor all in Yardley on every date that I just brought to your attention. Because again, it's over a couple week period, and Newtown is much larger than Yardley is. We will not know necessarily when artists are coming, but I don't think that they would cause any issues. But I wanted to find out if there's any kind of permitting or anything that I should be aware of before I agree to do this. And because they are going to start promoting this, and I had nothing to do with this, so, but they're going to start promoting it by the end of the week.
All right, great. So as before, hard to give blanket answers without knowing total details. It sounds like probably not, sounds like right, we've got no solicitation going on because I know that would trigger permitting. So I would assume that as long as nobody's planning to do any, you know, large installations.
No.
It's good, but I, you know, would always recommend just checking in once details become more clear with the borough staff, so everybody's aware of what's going on.
Okay, I'm not, I could do that tomorrow and speak to Paula, but it's just going to be a artist and an easel. Was there any questions from anyone else? Did anyone else want, need any information?
I just want to say it sounds really great. Nice to think of people creating art and just taking in the beauty of our community. So, and it makes sense, I guess, to check in and find out. But basically, if a person wants to stand and take pictures on a tripod, I mean, I've done that. So it would be helpful to know if that kind of activity unsolicited, not, you know, playing music and having a hat out, I guess that's like a different thing. But I mean, like someone just on their own personally painting something. Can we just give some guidance now, like maybe from the borough staff? And like, is that a person just standing and painting just so that they, they can move forward and not have to, you know, with some clarity?
I think it might be best, David, just to come in, talk to Wes and myself tomorrow. We'd probably just say, make sure they're not blocking sidewalks so that people can get by, strollers can get by, and that's basically about it. But something that, this is first time hearing, it's probably best just to come in, tell us what's going on, and we'll take it from there.
Would I, and I do apologize, I don't mean to push, but I would need to have an answer. It's not my fault. I was just presenting this idea in the last few days.
Like I said, why don't you come in tomorrow? Wes and I will both be in tomorrow. We have an appointment at 10:30, but then after 12 o'clock, we'll be available.
Okay.
I think that's probably best here to handle this one off one. You know, in principle, this is a good idea. This is something that brings people.
So I wanted to just mention, I'm sorry, David, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
Go ahead. Did you have something else?
Just one last thing about this is that I wanted to mention that the other sponsors are Visit Bucks County, who's a major contributor to Experience Yardley, the Newtown Business Association, Friends of Washington Crossing Park, all part of our scheme and my scheme to, you know, create a point of destination to actually entice people to visit Yardley, another reason to come and visit this great town. So I'm hoping that we can get to an answer that would be positive and productive. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other public comment tonight? I think, did I see Jerry Taylor waving your hand earlier? Yes, no, maybe so. All right, well, we can come back to that if not. Is there any other public comment this evening? Going once, going twice, going none, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Head number six is consideration of the consent agenda dated for today, March 16th. I'll read off the individual items that are part of the consent agenda. It's approval of the minutes from our March 2nd meeting, bills list dated for today, March 16th, a certificate of appropriateness, number 21-7, that's for a sign at 62 South Main Street. And there are three event permits, one for Music Together class, one for Sandy Run Girl Scout Summer Camp, and one for the Yardley Farmers Market. Would any member of council like for any individual item to be considered separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any questions, comments, concerns from council?
David, I just had a quick question for Paula. I could tell on two of the event permit forms, I couldn't tell on the Girl Scout camp. Is that at Buttonwood, or where is that one proposed to be held? Curiosity.
That's being proposed down at Fitzgerald Field.
That makes more sense. Okay, thank you.
Further questions on the consent agenda? Any public comment? Green none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries 720. Next up, I'll recognize Chief Kelly for the police chief's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items tonight. One of them is the resolution, but I'll save that for last. First is an announcement that tomorrow night, we will be having two additional officers out on a funded DUI patrol. We are joining many law enforcement agencies across the county in a unified funded DUI patrol to try and detect and suppress any type of overconsumption in the operation of motor vehicles tomorrow. Along with that, my second item, sir, is that today, two of our officers completed the second day of standardized field sobriety testing, Officer Kaczynski and Ron Berger. And on the second day, we depend on help from community volunteers. And today, we were fortunate enough to have Mayor Harding join our training as a role player and assisted these officers in developing some of their SFFT skills. And they will graduate that class tomorrow with a whole new set of tools and skills that they can use going forward. The last item I have, sir, is the proposed resolution. Last meeting, two weeks ago, at Public Safety, the Public Safety Committee considered the open source public media document that called for a new funding formula for the Pennsylvania State Police. By way of background, the Pennsylvania State Police are operating at a deficit and have been taking money from the Driver's License Fund. In 2017, Harrisburg proposed that municipalities who enjoy regular state police patrols begin to pay for those patrols. That has been proposed every year since, but for the 2022 budget, the new proposal includes that municipalities without regular state police patrols would also be called upon to pay a share of those funds. The proposed burden on Yardley would be, if it went through, $2.86 per resident for a total of $7,088. As you're aware, we rely on Yardley Borough Police Patrols 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, continuously for decades. In addition, when we do require mutual aid from other law enforcement agencies, that mutual aid normally comes from our neighbors, first being Lower Makefield, the New Towns, Morrisville, Middletown Township, Upper Makefield, et cetera. We have never, in my six years, and never in memory, called upon the Pennsylvania State Police for any type of regular mutual aid. So what this resolution for your consideration, for council's consideration calls for is to ask our lawmakers, both Senator Santicero and Representative Warren, to represent us in Harrisburg and our interest in not invoking this funding strategy going forward. I can read that resolution if you wish, but I know it's in everybody's back.
Sorry, it was muted there. Why don't we read it in for the record and for the benefit of those who are with us from the public tonight?
Absolutely, sir. The proposed resolution says, "A resolution in opposition of the 2020-2021 Pennsylvania State Police Fee proposed for all Pennsylvania communities. Whereas the Yardley Borough Police Department is responsible for providing all law enforcement services within the borough of Yardley, to include emergency response and the enforcement of criminal and traffic laws. And whereas the Yardley Borough Police Department operates continuously 24 hours a day, 365 days per year, handling over 7,100 calls for service in 2020. And whereas the Yardley Borough Police Department is staffed by dedicated full and part-time police officers, fully funded by the Borough of Yardley via its annual budget. And whereas a published proposal within the 2021-2020-2021 Pennsylvania State Police Budget would have all municipalities paying for state police funding, even if they have local police forces. And whereas the amount charged to each municipality is calculated based on factors, including a municipality's median income, cost of police coverage, and population. And whereas the proposed cost to the Borough of Yardley is estimated to be $7,088. And now therefore be resolved this 16th day of March 2021, that the Council of the Borough of Yardley of Buck County, Pennsylvania, calls upon members of the Senate and House of Representatives of the General Assembly of Pennsylvania, and specifically Senator Stephen J. Santicero and Representative Perry Warren, to oppose the portion of the 2020-2021 Pennsylvania State Police Budget requiring municipalities with full-time police coverage to pay any state police fees."
I thank you, Chief Kelly. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 21-02?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Segal-Morris to approve Resolution 21-02. There any discussion from council on the resolution? All right, Matt, I see you going there, but you're muted.
Thank you, dude. Sorry. Chief, is this part of like the state budget, a much larger bill? Or is this a standalone item that's being handled separately? Or is it part of a bigger piece of legislation that they're trying to get through?
That's kind of a complicated answer, sir. I think it began as part of the state budget, but was later isolated to be on its own. That's my, that's my best guess at this point, based on research.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion from council on the resolution? All right, hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, that carries 720. And you know, apologize, I did not call for public, so let's go ahead. Dr. Perlmutter.
Thank you. Yeah, I wish you hadn't taken the vote yet. There's a number of things I'd like to bring up. First of all, I'm not sure why this is a resolution. It seems like it should just be a letter that may be sent. I don't know why it's a formalized resolution. But more importantly, you may want to reconsider this because you're only looking at it from one side. There's two-thirds of Pennsylvania's 2,560 municipalities that rely on the state police for coverage, for full or part-time. And currently, our budget, our police budget is $686,998 for this year. That's like twice as much as it was six years ago. There may be an opportunity here. Instead of being against this, maybe you should consider actually using the state police part-time. Instead of, we have 14 officers, we're training them, we're supplying them. We're a one mile, one square mile town. You could save hundreds of thousands of dollars by using the state police part-time. Langhorne, I think Langhorne Borough does it, there's other towns that do it. It's a same kind of calculation that they use for that. They also have a number of services that they can provide, crime labs, detectives. I really think that, I understand why you don't want to have to pay the $7,000 if we're not using any of the services. But imagine the money you could save if we did use them for, let's say, patrols instead of the part-time. I think at the very least, you should try to do a calculation, a cost calculation. I don't know if you're aware, but I think it was 10 years ago when the council wanted to make the police department part of Lower Makefield. And there were a lot of discussions about that. Because a number of people, just a number of residents feel that we're just spending way too much money and don't understand why it's sort of doubled in size when our population hasn't and our crime hasn't. So again, it's just another way of looking at it that we could do what other municipalities are doing, two-thirds of them in Pennsylvania, and literally cut that budget probably in half.
Thank you, Ms. Perlmutter. Right, seeing no other comments, I guess for familiarity's sake, if anyone would like to reconsider, we'll hear that now. If not, we'll consider the resolution approved and move on.
Now, I would just like to make a comment. So for the record, when the Lower Makefield Police Department was considered as an option for our localized police for Yardley Borough, it was found that it would actually be more expensive than our current model. And we would see decreased, obviously, patrols and decreased service. Same would be said for using state police. They wouldn't be patrolling the borough as much as our police officers do. They certainly wouldn't be here tomorrow night on St. Patrick's Day on a funded patrol to keep our pedestrians safe from drunk drivers. And they wouldn't be to our house in two minutes when we are experiencing an emergency and need service from our police force. So I just don't think the state police model works for this town, and that's why I support this resolution.
The lower Makefield budget was from.
Had your opportunity for public comment, so we're going to move on from this one.
Can I ask something now? Because with what Dr. Perlmutter brought up, I do think it's a point that it's not, I think it's reasonable to spend a moment just so we understand, you know, both sides. I think that makes sense. And maybe I'm just going to want to invite him. Perhaps the chief wants to kind of enlighten us because I don't feel like I really have enough information to know about this other view. You know, I think what Dr. Perlmutter is saying, we get something for $7,000. It's not clear to me exactly what we get for that. So maybe if we could elaborate on that a little bit, and I guess I would love to get the chief's perspective on it.
Quickly on that, sir, $7,000 is for patrol services only. We still enjoy the benefits of the state police crime lab. We still enjoy the benefits of any special response teams they have. This money that they're looking to assess each and every municipality would be to pay for patrol services, which we already provide. And in response to what Ms. Thompson said, yes, the state police do, can provide services to some communities, but that service can take up to an hour to respond. And if you take last night for an example, one of our officers made an arrest in the wee hours of the morning that he came across in regular patrols. Someone had entered someone's vehicle and had set up camp in there and began to damage it when our routine patrols came through and found that. And that probably wouldn't occur if we were receiving widespread coverage from another law enforcement agency.
Thank you very much. So basically, we wouldn't be getting very much at all, nothing really.
Yeah, that was my comment. It seemed to be like, this was, you're just pushing more costs on municipalities, whether you use the service or not, right? And so to me, this is a cost share. We're going to get the same level of service. You know, I think some of Dr. Perlmutter's comments, at least, you know, there's some correlation, but they're really unrelated to this particular piece of legislation coming from the state. That's a bigger picture discussion, which, you know, we can have. But to me, this feels like a no-brainer for us to say that it doesn't feel fair for the state to change how they fund those services by charging municipalities who don't utilize them. That's why I support it.
We've also had, you know, been able to remain stable in terms of crime and when other communities in the area have seen increases. And, you know, it's like, it's kind of like, why, it's not, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I had a comment, because I mean, this brought up, I was talking to a citizen, we were talking about the budget. And, you know, we got in, I was out there fundraising for Mary Arthur Bridge, and they're a long-term resident. And they brought up, and just because Dr. Perlmutter made the point, I think the police, our police department does a really good job. But someone was bringing up the point, do we need two officers on duty? And why do we need, and basically, they brought up that in the past, that we usually typically only have one officer on duty. Is that something, is that true? First of all, I don't know, you know, the long history of that. And then second is, can you speak to that a little bit, chief? Because that was something that came out in the community when I was discussing the budget with some people.
Be happy to, sir. Insofar as I know, we don't operate with two officers on duty all the time. In fact, most of the time, we have one officer on duty, either supplement it by me during the day. And then two to three nights a week, we may have a second officer on duty. So it's more normal that we have one officer on duty. We have 14 officers, as indicated, but nine of those are part-time, who fill in for illness, vacations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would ask anyone who has a concern with our budget to compare us to other burrows in this county that operate with similar staffing counts. I know for a fact that there's another borough in this county that operates $1 million higher than us on a police budget with a very comparable staffing level. I know of another one within five minutes of us that is considerably higher with a very similar staffing level. So I would put our record and our financial responsibility up against any borough in this area. And I think you'll come out finding that we get more services in Yardley Borough than most other municipalities do at a lesser price.
I appreciate that, and that certainly will help me, you know, when people bring that up. So I appreciate that, chief. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I think it's important to have a police department that operates the way that ours does, with the community policing model, that knows our neighborhoods and knows our residents and are familiar to us. And so there's just a better rapport between the citizens or the residents of Yardley and the police department.
All right, thank you, everyone. Moving on to our, actually, Chief Kelly, was that all for your report? Should make sure we're closed out there.
That is, sir.
All right, thank you. Then we will move on to Paula for our manager's report.
And besides my report that I already submitted to you, I just wanted to let you know that now as spring has sprung, I have begun my garbage can inventory. And I expect to have before you at your next meeting, some proposals to replace our garbage cans. There's not as many as we originally had. I think the town originally had 14. And so far, we're down to five without Buttonwood Park. So I don't know where some went. I think some might have gotten hit and not replaced. But now that spring is here, I think it's time to replace those. I've been spending some time with some contractors down at the Annex, now that it's time to start doing stuff with that. So they're looking at the roof, the dormers, repairing them, and looking at the fascia and a lot of the wood to replace. So I expect to have a couple proposals before you, hopefully at the next meeting, so we can get moving with that. Our audit is just about done. We're waiting for one more item from our pension plan people, PMRS. And then it should go to the higher-ups at Kevin's, what's it called, at Kevin's place where he works. I can't think of the name of it, B. Burgville. And then once it gets approved there, then they'll send it to us and to all of you guys as well. And that's my report.
Great, thank you, Paula. Next item on the agenda is a solicitor's report. Mr. Klosser.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I don't have any report this evening.
All right, thank you. Next item, our council member reports. We'll begin with Mr. Curtin.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
We had a public works meeting earlier, so we just went over the sidewalk and the bridge, and everything's moving along fine. There is a grant opportunity that I'm going to ask, call on Liz to go over, so we can possibly make a motion and get that going. Liz, you there?
I am. Can everybody hear me?
All right, yep.
All right, so we have been made aware of American Waters Environmental Grant Program. They have a grant that is due at the end of the month that does not have a match and is for $10,000. And it is specific to anything having to do with kind of watershed cleanup. So it ties in very nicely with our current EAC. So it ties in very nicely with our current EAC watershed management program that we're doing. And it would really help supplement some of the activities, in particular with training the volunteers to do the visual assessment of the watershed and pairing that with a cleanup day of the waterway. So we think it, you know, makes sense to apply for it when it's not a match and it's a pretty simple application, and the supplementary documents already exist from when EAC put together their grant application.
Good. So Matt, is he proposing a motion or what's the ask here?
Uh, yeah. So I just wanted to make a motion to make sure it's okay with council for the engineer to prepare the grant documents for this grant for the water.
So when you say, Liz, pretty simple, already have supporting documents, what are we talking about in terms of cost?
It wouldn't be more than five hundred. It's probably gonna take me half a day to put it all together.
Actually, I have a motion from Mr. Ross to hear a second.
Second.
My motion is seconded by Mr. McCann. We'll turn to those questions, conversations, as any member of council have some discussion on this. Any member of the public have some discussion on this. All right, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, that motion carries. Matt, was that it for tonight?
Yep, that is all. That's my
All right. Sounds good. Next report item, Ms. Siegel-Morse.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. For myself, I have a few items I do want to report on. First is that I spoke with a staff member from Senator Sanacero's office. Shannon Sticker is his local government outreach coordinator in regards to the Pico lot. So they're gonna help apply some pressure from there and to see if we can get that sale moving. I think, Paula, we recently did have an update from Pico. Did we hear from them this week?
We didn't hear from them this week, but they did, well, they did send an email earlier this week saying that we should hear by the end of the week that the proposals were in front of the big bosses. So hopefully we'll hear.
Okay, so that project is moving. By way of summary, we did put in a fifty thousand dollar offer for the Pico property with the intention of preserving it as open space, possibly for some public good. So we will look for final answer on that. Second item I wanted to mention, and I did share this last time, I'll share it again, which is that County Bucks is running a hospitality industry recovery program. It's a little more than seven million dollars in that fund. And the grant application window is now open. They are accepting applications, I believe, through April second. And you can apply through the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. Grants will range from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. And notably, from my understanding of the grant, restaurants would qualify as applicants. So a number of things they could spend that money on if they received it, including payroll. You know, certainly, it's been a hard year for a lot of our local restaurants. And being able to keep their staff members has been a struggle. And the final item I wanted to report on tonight, number, council members know about this. Some people may have seen it in the paper. But the latest stimulus bill will be sending in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars to Yardley Borough. And it's part of the stimulus bill. We don't yet know what the spending limitations will be on that grant money using the county's stimulus money, the one-hundred-and-eight million they received last spring, you know, as a guideline. You know, there were restrictions on that money. Things had to be related to either, you know, services that were in the pandemic offsetting revenues that were declined. It wasn't just a lump sum of money that could be applied anywhere. But I do think and hope this would be a situation where we could reimburse our general fund for some of the COVID-related expenses that have accumulated over the past year. So certainly to all of our staff and the police department, we want to make sure we have those documents ready to go. And then once we see the spending guidelines, I think we'll have a clearer picture of how we will be able to put these funds to use. So that concludes my report. Is there any questions, though, particularly regarding the rescue plant money? All right. Sounds good. Moving on, Ms. Thompson.
I had my hand up.
Oh, sure, Mr. Perlmutter.
Uh, thank you. I have a question. Now, you did mention the restaurants as a, a potential recipient of that money. As part of the hospitality, who do you see as potential recipients in that category in town? I'm not sure I, off the top of my head, I know. Do you have any ideas?
So I'm not extremely familiar with the guidelines of that program. I know that restaurants should be able to qualify. I'm not sure how far that extends into other businesses. But the full information should be available through the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. And in specific cases, probably best handled by contacting someone there to figure out the eligibility of an individual business.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
No report.
Thank you. Mr. McCann.
Uh, no report. I'll just wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day as an Irishman and also wish David, fellow St. Patrick's Day birthday person, happy birthday.
Yes. For those of you who don't know, John and I share a birthday, and it's St. Patrick's Day.
This is so wholesome and quaint, guys.
Mr. Finer, any report items?
No, just my agenda item for later.
All right. That will close council member reports. Next up is discussion items. I don't think we'll have any, but I'll foster the opportunity to any member of the council have a discussion item they want to raise. Hearing none, other business, we have an appointment to the Harb term ending December of twenty twenty-four. And that's back to you, Mr. Finer.
Yeah, so it was really nice to see three members of the community step up and want to volunteer their time, their time to serve on Harb. So I greatly appreciate people wanting to serve and to be involved in that way and to volunteer their time. Uh, in this case, it turns out that Harb is, has specific requirements of the makeup of Harb. And one of those requirements is Harb requires an architect. And with the vacancy, there is some reshuffling on there. And so it would be advantageous to appoint an architect so that they could fill the architect's position on the Harb board, or I guess B is, stands for board. It's just Harb. So I'm trying not to be redundant there. So one of our applicants is an architect who's lived in the borough for twenty-one years and is clearly qualified to serve on the board. So I'd like to recommend, or to, I guess I'll open it for discussion, but the motion I'd like to put forward is to appoint Daniel Ward to Harb for the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second to that motion.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Mr. Finer, seconded. I'll give it to you, John. To, for the appointment to Harb ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. If any comments, discussion from council on the appointment. Hearing and seeing none, we have any public comment on the appointment, and I do see Mr. Taylor. Unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Yeah, right, right now, I'm the architect on the board, but the idea is that I would shift over to the historic building inspector, which is not the official use, uniformed construction code building inspector. But that would, by doing that switch, that frees up to have another architect on board. And as one of the members said, it's nice to have some more expertise in actually building construction and all that, so. And then I think we're also looking for another applicant if one of our members resigns. Is there anything on that? Is there any progress on that? Paula, did we hear from a person?
Not as of yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Other public comment on the appointment? I see Ms. Perlmutter. Go ahead.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to comment, since Jerry Taylor's going to be the inspector, this is the only committee where the, the inspector, the Yardley Borough actually building inspector is not a liaison but a voting member, and he never attends any of the meetings. Is that typical? I mean, I, I don't know, because you, you have a lot of people that don't go to these meetings. And sometimes you don't even have a quorum. So if, if now Mr. Taylor is going to be the inspector, should the building inspector be an actual voting member?
Mr. Finer, can you, I know you were
Yeah, I, I went through this. I understand the confusion here. It's not, when you look at the ordinance for Harb, they're talking about one person on Harb serving as the building inspector, but it is not the Yardley Borough Building Inspector. It is a historic building inspector, so it's not the same role, and that's the source of the confusion here. So the Yardley Borough Building Inspector is not a member of Harb, nor is required to be.
But he is, and that's why there's, he's one of the
No, he's not.
One of the seven. It's, it's listed on the site.
Which site?
On the website, the Yardley Borough website. Well, just ask Jerry, who are the
He's right here, yeah.
I believe, yeah, he's not a voting member. Is that correct?
He, he's, I, I agree. He's not a, he's not a one of the voting members there.
So there's
He's a deserving officer.
Okay, so there's seven members. Just, I'm just confused.
There will be seven members now. Yeah, it is confusing. I get your confusion. It's just that it's not the same person.
Okay.
Two different inspectors.
Understood. We have further public comment on that appointment. All right, hearing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries seven-two-zero. That concludes our scheduled business for tonight. Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion was moved.
Oh, seconded then.
Removed and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.